Well, I felt Marshall, I didn't hear anything.
No, Preston's supposed to be taking Philip's place, well, I understand that. That's what Philip told me.
On here?
Right.
Really?
I heard.
Well, with that, we'll just go ahead and start this meeting right at seven o'clock. Maybe just have a few seconds. That. We stand. Dave's little lead us in pledge and followed by, I'll follow the credit.
Up with the.
Pledgees to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Daryl, Father, we are so grateful for all the gifts that you have given us on this earth, the blessings of family. Be with Travis Elliott and with his family as they mourn their loss of Travis's dad. And be with them and give them comfort in these days. And let them be with each other and show that they have love and comfort and fellowship with each other. As we conduct this meeting, give us guidance and wisdom in all of our decisions that we do. Let us always be prayerful in asking your guidance, even at meetings and in our everyday life. Let us always be prayerful and ask for your guidance in things that we do. Be with us the rest of this night and as we conduct this meeting and lead this meeting, give us safe journey and travel to our homes and to our families. In Jesus Christ name we pray. Amen. Travis, his dad's passed away. I think it was Friday this past week, and so he will not be with us in that. So as far as his report in there to what we were doing with, he said it was nothing that could be taken care of next month. We've had a pledge prayer. Will call? We, all right, we have the attendance. Okay.
Since we don't have anything before the BCA, Max, I didn't think we'd even call you guys to order.
Did the commissioners appoint the third?
We appointed the position of that. But at the last meeting, didn't we go ahead and fulfill your BCA?
Well, I think it had to be, the commissioners had to approve it. That was gonna happen at the last, at the like mid-month meeting, I think, maybe. But I didn't.
We didn't, we didn't make sure it happens.
Well, what we did, we didn't have a forum last time to go ahead and pick the chair, vice chair. It was the purpose, the only purpose was really waiting to get that person. To get that person so we could get three to.
I've got Daryl and you and John Missler and Anthony and Mark Hartman as the BCA. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, that's correct.
Okay.
With Mark Hartman.
And I know Daryl, he had knee surgery today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, without a forum, we're not to worry, but we're not, until we actually get called and we have to proceed.
I think if it's your first meeting, that you have your organizational.
That's what we need to really do because we're having a hard time catching there. It's not really a big deal until we do have, it's business in front of us to get that for that forum.
Yeah. Okay.
So I've got the hat.
Okay.
And everybody get a copy of the minutes from Cheryl.
I am having trouble with your email address, Sergeant.
Stay clear of that.
All right. Write that down. Because it's, it's shipping it back in another way. And it had been, did you, have we changed it here?
No. We changed providers, but it, and changed the organization of it, but we may have too strong a filter on it, I don't know. We've been getting, we still didn't get emails that we should get.
Well, I didn't want to say you just had to block that.
Some we wanna get, some we don't.
I'm kinda picking, I'm kinda picking at that vibe, Phil. What was your middle name? I'll pick one. Okay. All right, the minutes have been sent out. Do you want me to read them or do you want to accept them as they were written?
Accept.
Bill, you made a question. Do I have to say it? And you know, second, and that's over discussion. We'll see none, we'll take two votes. All in favor, say the Father saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same. Pass. All right. All business in there. We're back to Salem ordinance in there. And we stopped at 156.056. And I, if you want, you two, if you would want to turn around and be on the other side of the table, might be a little bit easier for you to work with this.
Uh, Lori Hartman.
And I'll be on the right page here.
Oh. What are you thinking of that, Mr. Chairman? You want to, who was that DOT meeting? Was it March 8?
Yeah, I mean, I'll go here. March the 28th. March 28th is, you want to.
Well, I, the only thing was that at the council meeting today, Sabrina from the Economic Development, whatever partnership or whatever it is now, announced that there was going to be a meeting at the Seymour DOT on March 28th, four to seven, that will be, Endoc will be discussing the plans for any state highway roadwork that it'll be doing this year. And I just told Dave that we might, you know, somebody, a couple of us from this board might wanna plan on going up to that to see, you know, are they gonna change 56 from a Super 2 to a 93, or are they gonna shut down part of 135? You know, you might just wanna be interested in knowing what the transportation systems will be dealing with. So that's the only thing that I was gonna say.
Okay. So that is the, March the 28th, DOT Seymour. I think Ben Bowling said he was gonna go, so there's, I possibly will be going, so if you want to, we could cart pool up if you're interested. All right. We finished up with Highway Business District Two. And as we've been reviewing this, Salem's ordinance has several classifications as far as business districts, residential districts, and industrial districts. And each layer has its own set of parameters in their zoning map. So we're, we reviewed Harrison County, and I actually presented this to the council, County Council this morning, that we felt like it was some very cumbersome and heavy language in the north, and the Harrison County ordinance. And so we were looking at the Salem ordinance to be utilizing for probably not as complicated a document. So that's where we're at right now. We're starting out at the Highway Business District, and basically, as we go through this, we're gonna try to go through this and finish it up tonight and then if we don't, I plan on being out of here, and I don't know about the rest of you. No later than 8:30, and hopefully a little earlier than that. So if you're continuing on the rest of the meeting, as John Meade said, if you're gonna continue the rest of the meeting, you're gonna do it standing up.
Yeah.
So anyway, starting with Highway Business District Two. Regulations shall apply at this district. As you go through there, it talks about the different things that could be in there. Permitted uses of the laundry sales, sales used, boats, marine, building materials, greenhouses, what you would normally see in a regular business district as commercial greenhouses, as a little bit of setback in this particular language with that. Mortuary, home sale lots, just a lot of things in there. Special exceptions, drive-in businesses, including theaters in this, recreational vehicle parts, and conditional uses. And this is where your conditional uses, this is where you get into your adult bookstores and that type of stuff. Even though it may not be palatable to you to review this, it applies for the law that may be included in there, but as you see in all theirs, they recur back to the adult category, so there are certain parameters that they have to meet. Okay. Then it talks about some more setbacks, zone, residential, how far the businesses, oh, this is the adult.
That's the adult.
Yeah, that's the adult.
Where you.
Yeah. All right. So now we'll move to 156.07, talks about Central Business District. This would be, for your physical aspects, I would say like the square. Those type of businesses. And see, to us, that doesn't really match into what we accept. And I had a conversation with Mark, this was a little bit ahead, I had a conversation with one of the towns, you know, and by law, if they do not have a zoning and plan, they could go under the jurisdiction of the county plan. Now, I talked to one of the town members in there, and he says, good, you can correct some of our problems. Unfortunately, I don't think that's what the intent is, is to have a proper plan. For one, if they've got some problems already going on there, they're gonna be great fodder then. So they're not going, that's not gonna solve their problem. The other thing is, like Mark and I talked about, is that we might want to designate their city limits on the map and put it as, in a residential clause, that it's residential. And though.
We, we probably ought to look at simply saying that we do not have jurisdictions of the cities and towns. Unless you guys.
Or we don't want to exercise that.
I mean, but you, you may very well want to say, you know, the town of Pekin, our county ordinance is a county ordinance except for the incorporated areas of the town of Pekin, and/or the town of Campbell'sburg, and/or the town of Fredericksburg, and/or the town of Hartford. And that way, you don't get people coming in here saying, you know, Mark Clarkson violation of your city ordinance, or your county's planning and use ordinance, 'cause he's got three junk cars sitting on next to his house, and I want you to haul those off there. And when I come in, I say, well, those aren't junk cars, those are antique cars that I've been working on the last five years, and if you take those off, I'm gonna sue you, you know, you're stealing my personal property and after the races you get. And if you ever served on a town council remit board, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about.
Well, and also, in there, the discussion of that is that there are certain ordinances that are already in those towns.
Some, all the towns have some of those, it's always an enforcement hassle, is what it is. But I mean, to me, if you could keep yourself out of that area, you would want, I think you would want to do that. That's up to you guys. But the question is, can the, can the town force you to take them?
That was my question.
Can Campbell'sburg come in and say, we're part of the county, and because you've passed the countywide ordinance, even though you say it's excluding us, we have made the decision that you have to go work for us. And that I've gotta, I've gotta look at.
So we're gonna leave it to legal, you know, what we have. You know, 'cause when we did the comprehensive plan, there was a lot of discussion, you know, of what we impact. You know, cities and towns that already have comprehensive plan and already have a zoning ordinance and stuff, that's there maybe, you know. But the ones that don't, I mean, it's like, we gotta find the clarification of the law of who makes that call. So anyway, central business may come in effect if we have the jurisdiction, you know, in those particular towns, probably not being a lot of big stuff, but it would be language that we wouldn't maybe have.
Does every town have a finite boundary? I mean, do they have a, is there a map that you can look at and say, hey, Woolly York encompasses this area here, Campbell'sburg, Hardensburg?
Doesn't the county map show that? I think it does.
Campbell'sburg does.
Campbell'sburg and Pekin does. Hardensburg and, yeah, Campbell'sburg's one square mile. Pekin does, Malonia does, I'm pretty sure.
And I think even South Hill was a.
They do, because they actually have taxing districts, so they have to have a line.
Yeah.
They have to have a line, so yes.
I thought they were required to be part of the, if they didn't have their own, the county. I had to complain on me unless they offered out to me with another county like, if they were close enough to the border where they'd say, we wanna join Scott County instead. But they had, the one zoning was in the county, they had to fall under a zoning of some bodies, whether it was their own or, whether they read their own or whether they had to fall under the counties.
Right.
Is what I was concerned about.
I don't think, but I think you're right in that if we have a county ordinance, I think they'd fall into something they don't have.
That's what Mark was gonna look into, the players seeing us, but.
There's Fredericksburg.
Well, I can't, they took over like North Ground Water, Campbell'sburg takes care of all that, so that's where I got the idea of the word. If they got city water available, is it a mile, or a one acre, or two acres, or, because according to this, the most restrictive is supposed to apply, and like right now, the trailer moves into Campbell'sburg, but you're still kind of limbo. And it's on like a 60 by 120 lot, that's what they had laid out, but I didn't know whether we'd be better off if you tried to say, if we're gonna incorporate areas of the lot size of this, and the setback is the minimal, whatever, and that's like R1, and then dump that puppy off on the, and then encourage like subdivision and whatnot to move into where they don't have to have much ground, to take advantage of like Campbell'sburg. They require, they're required to have a hookup for sewer every place within that one mile square. You know, there's a lot of ground that's not done there, but their bylaws require them to hook you up if you want to, you know, subdivide off the fields that's still in town limits.
Right.
And I mean, there's still some ground there that could be encouraged to, if you got a subdivision, rather to do that than to come around here and, and whether you need to worry about what they're gonna do for septic was the bigger thing like last month.
What I don't wanna do, like I, you know, I think if it comes down, we'll have to see what the interpretation is wrong, is I encourage that, I think I need to send a letter out to, Travis designated some of the lead people to talk to in the towns and stuff, because they got their own ordinances. I mean, I think it'd be foolish for us to go in there and try to put something in, and they've already got some type of idea of what they would want in government, and then find something that's compatible, you know, to all the towns if we have to. If we have to exercise that in the towns, I'd like to make them consistent with each other.
Yeah.
Instead of, Pekin's different than Campbell'sburg, and have them all so that when people come in, you know, if they come in here for the towns, it's consistent everywhere, you know, whether it's South Boston County. Of course, there's gonna be things as far as groundwater and sewer capabilities that are gonna be different. So, all right. Central Business District is kind of, like I said, I'm just gonna, instead of going through all the definition with that, I would say that if you look at the square or the blocks around the square, you could kind of designate that as a central business district. It deals with a lot of things in there, bars, taverns, bed and breakfast, churches, about everything under the gamut. It's a small community type of. There's repairs and remodeling. It's got a 50% of the surface area or outer exterior being changed. This is one of those things, if you were to change, it's not if it's a non-conforming use type of business that's there, if there's over 50% of the change in that, then it goes underneath the new guidelines. But if it's not a 50%, they can still be repaired as a non-conforming use. 'Cause that's never, Anthony?
I'm just, on that sentence there, am I reading that right? If you decide to change the color of your building?
That's what it says.
In the central business district, you'd have to get it approved by the county commission.
That's what it says, 50%. So I guess if you only paid 49% of your building, it's safe.
So that's, I mean, I understand that the structural or changing materials, that makes, I just, I, it seems a little odd, the color.
You're creating ambience, and if somebody comes out and changes the color.
I'm just wondering with, like, did Lynx get approval for that, and that, or T's Antiques here recently, or?
That was part of that Main Street program.
Was it?
You know, you can understand that because they're right there, they're kind of trying to enhance a theme, you know, on the square. And I noticed something in there, of course, this has passed our, our rule, but you kind of sit there, you start, when we talk about signage, you know, that's coming up here, you know, different types of signage can really change a theme, you know. I'm not gonna be critical, but I'll just point it out to you. When I come around the square there, most of the placards on the square are on buildings, you know, there are signs with their names of the lawyer's office in there, and then you've got Hot Nails with neon sign over in the corner, but then there's Law Office Brown, and he's got a lit, a lighted sign out on the square that's sticking out toward that. I never noticed that there, but it's new. So signage can be, you know, if the, if the mannerism is to keep a theme, you know, with some type of a theme around an area, then in color, probably pretty important.
That's rather like a historical society.
Oh, it is. And I think these Main Street initiatives has some of those connotations to keep some type of historical aspect, you know, going. All right. Light industrial district, permitted uses. There's your wholesale businesses and your manufacturing. Okay? Ceramics, just kind of gives you an idea. What do, what do you not see in here so far that you saw in Harrison County? This is, gives kind of a narrative with a set of tables, of certain things, you know. All right. Oh, there's your sexually oriented even in there. Except several paragraphs, but it's the same stuff. Heavy industrial? Chemical storages?
Wait, wait, go back. You'll notice there are a lot of what the city does, it allows there, in heavy industrial, you can, you can do light industrial.
Right.
So it kind of piggybacks lots, lots of times, you'll see, see that type of situation. Now that's a, I mean, I've always kind of thought that that's an interesting scenario, 'cause why would you want, oh, something that's in light, let's see, you know, research experiment or testing laboratories? Why would you want a testing laboratory right next to a heavy equipment manufacturing site? You want.
Depends on what you're testing.
Well, yeah. I mean, well.
There's a lot of different.
But generally, you would think your testing equipment is gonna have, to have fairly specific tolerances and purified air, or it's stuff like, all that stuff.
Right.
And you allow a foundry to come in next to it, and they say, sorry, it can both be done. That's, that's an interesting scenario.
There is.
I really think that happens a lot.
Under the city's guidelines on heavy industrial, I think there are only two manufacturing plants that qualify for that in Salem. And my understanding always had been that if there, if it was some type of forging or heat treating or steam treating, where there was some type of smoke or something coming from that business, then that qualifies for heavy industrial and it had to be zoned accordingly. And of course, GKN and Tecumseh were the ones that for a long time were the only ones in Salem that were, that were actually zoned by it too.
Then I guess you've got asphalt, so I guess where Campbell's.
Yeah, that asphalt plant out there.
And there, quarry.
Yeah.
And of course, of course, that would have been something built. I mean, the quarry, I'm sure nearby the railroad was probably grandfathered in, 'cause Hartman, that's been there for.
And of course, they're shut down now, so.
They're shut down.
But, you know, they, they always had ongoing blasting going on. I know when we had our office on Jackson Street, you could almost set your clock, you know, that there was gonna have to be an explosion out there at a certain time, every day. And we were on the same shelf of rock, so it rattled everything and that was off.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, it's kind of interesting in there, I mean, the asphalt manufacturing and stuff, and you talked about heat. I've seen verbiage of that, about heat being described, like the Campbell's plant is classified as light industrial. But within that factory, they've got a heat treatment in there for paint in there in that plant right now. And it's pretty hot in there, but it's not like a foundry. It's not like GKN, GKN or even the plant out there at Campbell'sburg, where they've got those ovens, you know, ready those parts out of.
Yeah, that heat treating is where that oil is infused into those parts and then baked after, you know, that puts off quite a lot of smoke, and there's a lot of heat involved in that.
So just, so just think if the Smith plant were still in operation, even though So just, so just think if the Smith plant were still in operation, even though it was grandfathered, but say that somebody, I mean, this is talking about within the city limits. Would that, uh, could you see the Smith plant with the manufacturing in light industrial or heavy?
Light industrial.
Light, okay. Okay. Alright. Well, I just tried to get us in gear in our mind about what we're actually seeing as we go through these ordinances. Um, plant development districts, um, you know, KKN or, uh, she did not like PUDs. You know, she, uh, whenever you had plant districts, then you segregated out. That's kinda like defining, this is all good except here, you know, and then we've got special exemptions. But this talks about, you know, uh, plant development districts, you know, especially, um, that are out of the norm, other other definitions. Some of these that you'll see in there, the plant development are, uh, the airport is one. It's a PUD. Uh, there was a reference in here to a street. See, there's a planned airport, uh, district, and this deals with the old airport. The new airport is down further than that. But, uh, that gives the airport there, but then, which doesn't apply to us. Either one. Yeah. That's airport, and then there's one on the street, Albery. That's still the airport. Okay, East Hackberry. So, even in city, in Salem, they had some different, uh, districts that, uh, they segregated about. Now, I, I don't envision that we have any, but, you know, there could be a time that we write the ordinances, that there's a circumstance come out, if we were wanting a business or an industry in there, there might be a provision that you would come up to a PUD. So, anyway, I just wanted to show that, that's the end, end of the airport language, which is the old airport. We already have airport language now. And that, and that's the only one that we need to deal with because, and I think that the other airport is still within the city, uh, city's jurisdiction, is it?
Nope.
It's not?
It's outside the, the two mile lane.
The old airport is?
Kind of, the runway is.
Okay.
Runway is.
Alright. About the cluster buildings today, in the county today, the fringe.
I was thinking that they were, I was thinking they were, uh, I think the cluster, some of the buildings are in the fringe. I won't say that all of them are, but some of them are.
Yeah, but wouldn't, wouldn't that just lead to a problem if you're gonna have two jurisdictions to try to, I mean, not the same, for the same area?
You're gonna have it. You're gonna have it.
It doesn't matter what you do.
I mean, you just look at where your line is.
Yeah.
You just look at where your line is.
But I tell you, you make a good point, you should ought to have similar language. Alright. And see, this is not applicable to us, but this is a, a different, uh, East Hackberry Street Plant Development District, and they put it together.
You know, you, you, you might be looking at something like that again as you go out east fifty-six.
Oh, yeah.
Once you, once you pass out the two mile fringe. Be interesting to see how that's gonna, gonna continue to develop.
Yeah. Once it goes past, yes. Okay. I need to talk to, it's got a lot of different, uh, parking ratios and lighting and signage that's in this PUD, but they also have, uh, a separate, uh, as we go through here, there is signage and parking that's described down below, but they went back and they specifically in this PUD, they had to define all that parking ratios. And they referenced in there shall apply, the ratio shall apply, but they had to reference the other documents in there to make this PUD its own entity. Didn't that change for? They did. In fact, I think in this number right here, two thousand and fifteen S twenty, I mean, two thousand and fifteen is probably when it was adopted, don't you think, Mark?
Yeah. That's reversed a year.
Okay. supplemental district regulations. Off-street parking requirements, you know, when do you think that that would be applicable to us? And we have to take, uh, head to towns a little. Is there any other place? Let me give you an example. What about churches?
You're gonna regulate churches?
Well, they, or parking spaces. Parking space requirement.
Oh, yeah, that'd be interesting.
Because again, what's the church that just burned? The meeting at the lines close, is that Highland? Or something like that, hold up church. And they're, they're rebuilding. So, once it burned, you know, and they're starting the re- and they're starting from scratch. If that, I, and I don't know, I know nothing about them, so, you know, I'm not trying to pick on them, but I'm just thinking, if their original parking lot didn't meet whatever you said would be the requirements, all of a sudden you could be sending Travis out there saying, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna have to go buy another acre land or something because you, you're now gonna have to meet the requirements.
Would that be a point thing with the bakery?
For the bakery.
Yeah, the bakery, you know, uh-
H&R.
H&R, you know, rebuilding.
If, if it were out in the county, it, it would, I mean, it's, it's all within the city.
How does the city of Salem, there's-
Parking?
Parking for, do they acknowledge churches as-
Well, let's see.
As part of theirs, um?
I mean, I don't think it matters what it is.
Oh, just any building?
I think it's any building.
Any public use building.
Yeah.
I had kinda thought the churches were exempt from the city's-
There's hotels, church, there's seven, five clubs, one space per-
That, that was just in the-
Two hundred square feet, yeah. Right here it is.
One space for every five.
The light, a lot of light.
There are thirty churches, there's one space for every five seats.
Hey, I think David, you need to go out there and do it yourself. Go tell them, you need next acre, you can't build. Go David, go. I'll drive you out there. That might just be it.
You know, it is in there. You know, in, in there. And, you know, in the city of, you know, and, you know, I, I've seen a lot of churches, but, uh, there's, there's a church in Brownstown, just to speak of, just as an example, that's in there by the light. And, uh, if you've ever been passed there on a Saturday night, I think it's a Catholic church in there, I mean, they're parked everywhere, all the way around that street and everything. There's really no parking at all at that corner church and stuff.
But this will just be new churches or churches that would have some sort of damage for some sort of-
Yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna be grandfathering in a lot, yeah, so.
But, you know, is churches built and stuff?
Right, yeah.
This is gonna be a point.
And I don't think it's necessarily, if we're gonna require that the factory has certain amounts of spaces per employee or per square foot, exempting churches just because we don't wanna regulate them, I don't think that's necessarily correct way to go about it. Cause just like a factory, it's a, it's a place in which people are coming and congregating in one area, if we're gonna require a factory to have it, or a shopping center, we're gonna have to do it with the churches too. Now, whether it's one per five seats or not, that's debatable, of course, but if we require one, the fact that it's a not-for-profit is, in my opinion, besides the point.
Okay. Alright, getting to that separation of church and state too.
Uh, for using your public safety breathing behind zoning to start with, you have to apply it-
Yeah.
The same way as you do new buildings for, and like you said, the grandfathered in is kinda tough to do anything with, but, uh, you have to put down some kind of, if you gotta put it for one thing, you gotta do it for everything else. Justified as public safety, not park it on top of the rest of the hill where somebody is gonna get, we'd be on the wrong side of the road, kind of pass it along.
Isn't the case with the park, you know, there's no parking at that church. There's a pull-off and a gravel, small area, but cars park.
Newbie Road.
Yeah, and everyone parked on the side of the road, cause there's nowhere to park right behind the church, so, you know. And it is, it's right on a, on a sort of S curve, you know, which is dangerous.
They, it's, they've got a little bit of land there behind them, I don't know how much, um, of the church, that more to the front, and they do have a land behind them that do have parks.
Well, we're just going through here, Preston, as far as looking at Salem's ordinance in there, as far as the work with what parts we can adopt and not in there. I'll give you an example where there's no, where it's safety in there, where they don't have the separation. Now, if you wanna put an entrance onto a state road off of the church, you gotta go through quite a procedure-
Yeah.
To make an entrance in there. And I don't care if you're a church, I don't care if you're a business, you're gonna go through the same procedure on there. And it's for a public safety issue.
Yeah, I looked at the Problem Bunker Hill guy, you know, several years ago.
Yep, yeah. Alright, uh, we got the hospitals, restaurants, you know, this has got all kinds of different, um, uh, things as far as parking spaces.
And I don't know, I don't know what, how they came up with, I, I noticed, you know, the, the bowling alley is five spaces per alley. And that's pretty easy to figure out, cause you usually go with one, two, three, or four, I mean, you know. But, like the churches, with a hospital, and the church is per seat, and then everything, but you go, keep going down, others, most things are per square foot. So, I don't know if you would look, if you might wanna be, when you're talking about being consistent, do you wanna look at per square foot, just for everything you have?
Well, see, they got in trouble with Walmart because, when they used their own guidelines as far as with Walmart, and I'm gonna check in there for revision, I think this probably is the new language, but with Walmart, with their old in there, they were gonna have to have a huge mass of area because of the square feet for Walmart. And so they toned it down.
They adjusted the parking space dimensions.
Yeah.
So, to increase the number of parking spots that they had, you know, like, maybe it was eight by twenty that it started out, and I think it adjusted down to maybe seven by sixteen or something like that. I know they made an adjustment for the dimensions of parking spots.
Alright, so some of it's dealt with, uh, the square foot of a building, some are squared by seating capacity, so there's different, uh, ways that they establish parking. Okay. Professional building, uh, say that there's a doctor's office that's put out in a rural area, that it's gonna have to meet the criteria, you know, if we use stuff like this. Industrial plant, four hundred square feet, warehouse, same way. Talking about off-street loading, safety issue, again. Uh, accessory, uh, you know, we're talking about buildings and structure. Mobile home is not classified as an accessory structure. I've seen a lot of them used for storage. Public utility, use of structures. May anybody an expert on signs? Now, do you think the sign, uh, criteria in a city would match up to what the sign criteria would be out in rural?
No.
I talked about the signs being on the placards on the front of buildings, you know, and around the square, the majority of them are that way. But out in the rural area, I can see a lot of signs like chassels, you know, see those type of signs. Now, I'll wanna bring something up in that, cause, uh, we, out of the Westview, there's a new sign, okay? And, uh, after that sign went up in there, there was a bad accident that happened right on that intersection. And I, I've contemplated in that whether it was a, a distraction to the driver, because it was new, it was, had lights on it, you know, where it flashed, and that was a distraction at that intersection. But there's been bad accidents at that intersection before, also. But I think whenever we think about signs, we need to think about public safety in there of if a sign is a distraction. Now, out in rural community, I will tell you that there are some signs that are really, really misplaced, you know, uh, that they can actually hinder the visual of you coming up to an intersection. Um, I'm not, I shouldn't go at liberty, but there's one set of new signs that's been going up all over the community, and about three places I've been to, the sign is put too close to the intersection, that it'd actually distract. Now, Preston, you've been in law enforcement in there, I don't know if the sheriff's department can jurisdiction that or not, or does he need something to work with in guidance?
He needs something to work with in guidance. And use, use the way he is.
I mean, just because you get permission on landowner to put a sign up, doesn't necessarily mean that that sign needs to be placed, cause they like to have it so it's really visible that you can't miss it. The worst thing about it, you can't miss it, sometimes you can't look around it either. That's why they took all the berm shade signs down, okay? Same thing, with the distraction of drivers. That's the reason they disappeared.
What was it?
Berm shade?
Oh.
Oh, you're too young.
Okay. But you must've been aware of that one?
Were that the one that, that twirled? No, they were just signs. I wish I could remember some of them now, but they were all just little sayings. Each sign had a saying on it, and I've forgotten, having the last sign, it was advertising berm shade. They were just silly little-
Second rule of-
Yeah, silly little sayings, sayings, and it, they really did, they were distracting, cause you always look and say, well, what's the next saying it says?
Well, your, your billboards and signage along state roads-
Will go with me.
Will be governed by state statutes.
They are right here.
And then, but, one of the things you, you, you talk about the Westview sign is how bright it is at night.
Yeah.
And I can see that if you had individuals, if that was, let's say, at Bunker, or at, uh, Mount Taber Church, and you had people living around that, they're probably not gonna be too happy out in the country about how bright that sign is, because they enjoy, I would think to some degree, being out in the country and being able to see the stars, at least during the summer, you know, and, and it being a little bit dark. So, you're, one of the things too, that you would- So you're, one of the things too, that you would opt, you would, I would think would be wanting to look at, which is somewhere, I think, in, maybe not in their sign section, but I know Salem has, you know, a lighting...
Illumination.
Illumination requirement.
Well, you'll notice that there are some signs that are a basic sign, but then they've got some kind of offset light that shines up on that sign. And those lights, if you're coming at a certain direction, are pretty bright and shine in your eyes, whereby if you've got a internally illuminated sign, it's a different deal. Signage is very important to a business. I, when, when we were on Jackson Street, I always wanted to put a lighted sign up, and I just never could bring myself to do it, because I'd always known that I wanted to move away from that location if I could. And so when I did move, I, I bought a lighted sign, and it was very expensive to do it, but probably that sign paid for itself in the first year.
Who taught you to have to get permits for them?
I had to get permit from the city was all I had.
State, once, because you were in the city, all you had to do was say, in the past city...
Yes, and it had to, it had to be off of highway right of way, and it is.
Yeah.
And, and you couldn't interfere with any utility wires or anything like that, so... But I let the sign company work with most of that. I got the permit for it, but beyond that, I...
You know, even security lights, I know where there was one, I don't think it's there anymore, on one sixty, when Asher Brown's store was still there, some subsequent owner had a big, big directional.
Yeah.
It wasn't just a, it wasn't just a security light, it was a big directional security light. And at night coming, going down one sixty towards Antebellum, it was quite blind in there.
Oh, yeah.
You can, you can hit that scenario with a security light over at, oh, if Loney coming from the Hartsburg, from Loney, or Harts, yeah, Hartsburg, Loney Road, where the farm has that, that equipment shed along the side. If you're coming northbound, at night, they have a security light that you pop that little hill before you go in that straight stretch next to the, to the restaurant, that'll blind you for about thirty seconds.
Yeah.
I forgot one. Probably on the farms that way too. It's directional, but, you know, I actually put flags out, you know, and it's not, it's kind of an indirect, but it actually will light the road up, you know, the way it is. So not only are you talking about signs, you may be talking about, it talks about illumination, we're talking about public safety. Now, I really, we don't want to be, I, I don't want to stir the pot up so much that we're having jurisdiction, uh, security lights, because most of these security lights anymore are, are directional type of security lights, which can be very bright. I think it's kind of interesting, signs that would be eliminate, uh, illuminated here that are, they're go back to your districts, B one, B two, which is your business. Large, two, industrial, one, two. And it talks about, does that, uh, do a glare? There's nothing that says so many levels in there. If you read this language, it gives a lot for interpretation.
I'll take that, that's somewhere. Maybe that's on, is that on parking? Parking hogs?
On the elimination.
Yeah. I thought they had something with so many powers, but anyway, don't get me wrong. Sorry. Does your light ever go off at night, urban?
Uh, my sign?
Your sign, yeah.
It doesn't come on till it's totally dark, and then it stays on till daylight.
Probably light. Does the, does the mid-southern sign, is it? I thought at one time it stopped at some time, like...
No, I think, I think it stays on all night as well.
Does it now? Okay.
That's one of the advantages of having a illuminated sign.
Of course, in the residential, rural residential's R one, R two, R three, they talk about the signs that are, that could be in there. All right.
I think the biggest thing on signs is the size, you know, that, that needs to be regulated. I mean, even in a, a business area, you know, I think it should be a, a certain sized business where you should be allowed, uh, a larger sign, and a larger sign should be at a higher elevation, I think, than, than what a smaller sign should be. Those, I think those are some qualifications that should be considered.
I remember a controversy out on Highway fifty-six with Coggin Enterprises sign in there. Of course, they, it was lighted at one time, it's not lighted anymore.
Yeah.
And that is because it actually stepped right on the line with a residential house that was right there. So that's an example where you got elimination. Well, there was also a problem that that's what they looked at when they looked at their door. So if you see, there are real tall shrubs that are growing right now, and some of those tall shrubs are not that go to the sign in some places, so you get those type of things going on. But you talk about your dimensions in there. Here are some of the things about dimensions. This is talking about like your big billboard signs, six hundred square feet measured on the exterior, dimensions of some, that's your V-shaped, uh, signs that you can see along the state road. Understanding the state is going to have a certain jurisdiction over that too. They got, the only thing I've ever seen of these signs is that there is a height restriction, not a minimum.
Yeah, a maximum height.
Yeah.
But then you go over along I sixty-five, and you see hotel signs over there, and gas station signs that are probably, what, ninety feet?
Ninety feet.
If Lady Bear Johnson had just passed that to be, that law to extend another thirty or forty years, it would have been nice. She was the one who got that. Got her law started. That was Lady Bear Johnson.
Really?
Yeah. When, when obviously the president. All right. So there's, there's some of your signs, like, okay? Yard exceptions or large, that's like your entrance to your subdivisions, you know, at that industrial park right now, we are probably going to have to remove that sign going to the industrial park in front of the scenes office. Because if you come to find out, it's actually some of it, not all of it, some of it is actually on the property.
The hassle sign.
Yes, the hassle sign. And most likely, it's going to have to be removed. Shopping centers, there are signs, we're seeing that being built up down fifty-six right now. The neon signs there. And there's your off-street parking. All right. Loading and unloaded space. Ground retreatments. Hotels, motor courts, motels. Public garages, motor vehicle service stations. Temporary use structures. Storage of flammable liquids. Private swimming pools as accessory use. I don't know how much I want to get involved in that. Like, I don't, what do you think, Mark? There's no reason for us in a rural setting to get involved in this, is there?
I don't know. I just don't know.
I can see it in subdivision. Part of the subdivision ordinance.
I don't know.
Okay? So I'm getting there. Now, a lot of, some of them are talking about, uh, safety in there, it says some, you know, there's some safety things involved.
What I was going to ask, isn't there some liability issues there? I don't care if you live in county or not.
I think you've got a fence, a, a county or city.
Some kid fall in and drown.
Isn't there some type of a state law or whatever?
There is, there is.
So there's no sense of us having to duplicate something like that.
I feel like there'd be a lot of chasing that around. I mean, I can think of three, four on the way to my house that don't have to be fencing around them, but they don't have...
Are they above ground or in ground?
Um, one in, two above.
See, you're only, I don't, you guys were talking about state laws and stuff, I don't know that they're, the statutes, I, that becomes a liability issue, and it becomes a, a risk issue with your insurance carriers.
And most of the time, it's what the insurer, your insurer...
I, I, I'm thinking that that may be...
I don't know anyone who's going to insure your house, if it's above ground or...
But see, that's, that's the point. That's what I'm saying, I'm not...
If you don't have insurance.
Yeah, you don't have insurance, then you don't get a mortgage, you don't...
Now, you might know something about, speaking of liability, a pool is an attractive nuisance, so regardless of whether you have a fence or not, neighbor kid comes over and drowns in your pool, you can, or you trust that or not. Is that correct? I mean, it's an attractive nuisance, right?
Well, it has been known as attractive nuisances, and that becomes a theory, so and what are you doing to, to, and all that? And that's kind of why, why I don't really want to sit here and answer tonight about do we want something in our ordinance about that or not? Is the county somewhat responsible, or, or, yeah, do we have an obligation to say, this is what you need to do if you have a pool? And if we don't have it, are we somehow being negligent to the, to the landowners?
Well, I think that David said too, there's some state laws that regulate.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying, Preston, I don't, I don't really know there's state laws that regulate that. I think what you're, what we're thinking about is more along the line of case law, what the courts have said, and what insurance companies will, will do for, for homeowners because they don't, they do or not have a fence. You don't have to have a fence if you have a pool covered.
Yeah.
And you cover the pool.
But it's got to be of a certain standard.
I read an interesting story about injury on the pool in the country not too long ago, where they had to get a cow out of the pool that was running loose.
Just wandered over, got into it.
Yeah.
So with, you know, and when I first looked at this, I thought, well, this is something that way down, but maybe it is.
See, that's, I just, I don't, I don't know, so I don't want to sit here and say, yeah, we can just scrap, you know, just put a big fence through all that and forget it. Or we somehow been negligent by not having those requirements within, so when I go out and build, you know, a million dollar home, and I put a new ground pool in it because I'm the lottery winner, and somebody drowns in it because I, because I, we don't have any regulations for, or somehow the county binding that, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Dwellings, minimum floor area, small houses.
Tiny houses.
There's a section of compact houses.
Yeah, there's compact too, but this is about five hundred feet floor area. I thought it was kind of interesting, they had a minimum floor area, no cellar occupancy, sloped of yards. The sloped of yards, that kind of reminds me, maybe we had, we had somebody come in for the plan commission. And you've got to understand out here, in some of our rural settings out there, where people are putting houses and stuff. I remember one woman come in and she heard a complaint was about a confined feeding operation that was going to be at the end of her hall that she had, and she talked about her house in there, and in the process, she says, well, we got lovely house in there, it's right there, and we got a seating view, we're right straddle of the hall. And so she actually brought pictures that I'll end, and it was, there was one part of the house that was over here, and one part was on this, and there was a ravine that was right underneath of the house. She said, well, we had one problem, we had a big eight-inch rain, you know, in twenty-four hours, and mud come through our front door and out the back.
You know, there.
But, you know...
How do you know what you're talking about?
And so, so she was bringing, you know, that subject up and that, so, you know, there, we will have huge sloped yards, you know, in there. Of course, as far as where people put, of course, we've got an instance where we've got some houses that are built at the toe of the dams too. And that creates a problem, because then the dam becomes a high-risk dam, and then has to be inspected twice or three times as now of what a regular dam is. But I will tell you, I went and looked at one for a conservancy district, and the dam was their backyard, and it was manicured to the hill.
Well, going to try to count the waters, office building.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, there's, and then here we go with mobile home parks. They talked about rural residential in R three districts, and it gives a certain criteria on mobile home parks. If you want me to slow down, I will, but I'm trying to get through as much of this as possible. Mobile home locations, we refer to as rural residential, and some of those parts in there. Understanding this is city ordinance. And a lot of this stuff, you know, talk about hookups, sleeping accommodations, you're going to have health department involved, and you're going to have Travis involved with their hookups and stuff. It's already, compact homes. They have to still meet some of the same requirements as what a one-family home would be for their requirements. Storage of mobile home and recreational vehicles. Mobile home subdivision. What would be the difference, would park in subdivision, would a mobile home park and a mobile home subdivision be different? I think so.
What I would say subdivision, you would normally think a little bit more room, or I would anyhow, a little bit more room.
Subdivision, they own a lot.
Okay?
Yeah.
Park is great, okay?
One thing we've not talked about is, uh, burn homes or basement homes. And, uh, we just, we just sold one, and in fact, it's within, you can throw a rock and hit it from here. And, uh, in appraising that home, and it's been a while since I've been involved in, in a sale of a basement home, but, uh, this one, the, we, we got a loan on. A lot of times, whenever they change hands, there was an FHA home, so it had to comply with HUD. And the appraiser, whenever you appraise a home like, well, either a basement home or any type of home, the square footage, uh, you had, in the appraisal form, you have a block that talks about above-grade square footage and above-grade room count. Well, there is no above-grade square footage or above-grade room count in burn home. So the appraiser, when he appraised it on the above grade... So, the appraiser, when he appraised it on, on the above grade, it had zero room count, zero bedrooms, zero bathroom, zero square footage. And then he goes down to the next block on the appraisal form, and it says, uh, finished area in the basement. So, he had three bedrooms, uh, one bath, and, uh, the total room count, which was five, but HUD wouldn't accept that. This was done by their guidelines, but they wouldn't accept that appraisal because they said you can't have a home with zero square footage. And so, you know, we, we went, it took, uh, almost four weeks to get that loan to go through, through HUD because of the fact that it had zero square footage on the appraisal. And the house is about twelve hundred square foot, but it is a basement home, and so, you know, it's a unique problem. The appraiser was right, but HUD was wrong in that they wouldn't, uh, took so long to get them to accept that appraisal. But basement homes pose a totally, uh, different scenario on, uh, home construction too than, than, uh, what a normal home would, what you would call a normal home.
They had to have, uh, two accesses out too, don't they?
They would.
They had to have two accesses out in the basement home?
Yes, they did, and, uh, they, you know, they can have, even if, let's say you have a home that, that has a full basement under it, and you have three walls of that home that are exposed, only one wall's back in the ground, that's still below your roof. And it's still, and you can't, it, it, the value on that is different than what the above grade, uh, square footage is, but still, uh, you have to, uh, have to come up with a different description for that area. So, you would think that, uh, because it had just one wall that was in the ground, that it wouldn't be a problem, but it is. That's just the way HUD describes things, and, uh, may not have anything to do with what we're talking about here, but basement homes are a, a different criteria.
Is that addressed, you didn't notice whether that's addressed or not?
Is what?
I haven't seen it. I wonder if that's addressed in Salem's, but I have not, I have not seen it in this document.
No, I, I haven't seen it addressed in there either. I don't think it is. And, and I don't know where there are any basement homes in Salem or not. If there are, I'm not aware of them. There are, there are two, this basement home down here, and there's one down on, uh, uh, Lake Salem, the road that, uh, before you get to the bypass, it does end down there.
Is there one out of, off of, uh, fifty-six?
Walker Bowl, where it's got a three-sided one. There's one out in Little York, that I know of.
There's a brand-new one down on Cox River Road down too.
Somewhere out along fifty-six, there was one that's built, you see the front of it, but it's built in.
That, that's a full basement home out on New Salem though, that, we were more built that.
Yeah, you're, well, I've found that, that one's been foreclosed on a couple of times.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I think it's sort of his point bringing up is that this same scenario can apply. If it's technically zero above-ground square foot, can that be approved under, if we adopt?
Yeah.
This work, this city ordinance, and also, if I put a two-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot house on a two-hundred-and-fifty basement, does that work? Can we add above-the-low grade, or do we need to, you know, specify, I guess? Cause hypothetically, you can put a tiny little basement with a tiny little house that adds up to five hundred square feet, but that's, that's, that's not what we want.
Two closets, yeah.
Hypothetically, that's, you know, a scenario we get in if we accept below grade as counting per square footage.
Okay, alright. Recreational vehicle parks, you'll see this out in the rural area. Okay? Airport overlay, we've already got this. This is already done. Home occupations. I think it, uh, we really need to look at our comprehensive plan when we look at this. I mean, it's very important that, uh, we don't discriminate against home businesses in that, as far as how we implement our ordinances and stuff, so, be aware of that. I, to give you an example in there, I, I got a lawyer that I use up in Indianapolis, and to get to his lawyer's office, which was in his house, you're in the middle of a subdivision, you really are, and this is on in Indianapolis, under their jurisdiction. And the neighbors do not like it because he'll have clientele, you know, come in there, and they'll be parked all the way around in a cul-de-sac, or around, and parking there, in there. I don't know how he got the job done, but he was a lawyer. I'm sure he got something.
Don't hit me for coming up and using an out-of-county lawyer.
There you go.
There you go, Jay.
Four hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah, we know.
I did stick my foot.
Yeah, you sure did.
But anyway, you know, there's, you, you can get into situations, you know, the town safety, you have subdivision. And there, you've got somebody that does a home occupation, uh, business in there, and then he starts infringing on the rights of the people in it, not saying that they would have a, uh...
Well, your parking particularly is a big problem with, with scenario, parking and traffic can become a really problem real quick.
Yeah, I think it happens too, with the type of business that moves, just what markets, you know, if you're only gonna have one person at a time at your house all day long, you know, I can't see, that's gonna make a very big impact on something. Alright, uh, we talked about those signs being up there, so, and that's, there are some of the businesses. Give us that insurance, they already bear. Josh, are there any cobbler's around anymore?
Not in Salem, no.
There was one in Scottsburg.
Yeah, there's one in Scottsburg.
Bedford too.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, just something for you to think about, and then there's enforcement. This is the big one. We can have all the rules in the world, but unless you put a mechanism of enforcement, and Travis has talked about that, you know, as far as sending letters out saying that you're out of compliance, and that can be a very timely and unproductive, um, circumstances. We, I, we were, we, I think that, uh, I went with Mr. Green, Justin Green, in there to a seminar at Bloomington, and a lot of people are using penalties of non-compliance. And it kind of a daily if you're out of compliance, until you come into compliance or adhere, and make the changes to compliance, whether it's a building as they're building, or if they have, are, have disregarded period to prevent process, uh, there was so many, so much of a fine that is put on every day. Don't you eventually have to go to litigation to get something like that? You will, you will, you will. But they were binding it to the property tax. Oh, yeah, right, sure. And, well, I highlighted here in this, as far as the administration of enforcement, the pleasure of the mayor. Now, uh, this would be in privilege of the pleasure, uh, of the commissioners, would it?
Yes.
There's your certificates and these permits. All that there. Some of this is in our rules and procedures. We do have a lot of this language and rules and procedures. The planning commission, and we have this described pretty much in detail already. There's your board of zoning appeals, which they have their own separate, uh, part in that, so, I think that we have those components pretty well applied.
What's that about compensation?
Well, I, but, you know, look at what the compensation is, five dollars for each official meeting.
I get back things?
Yeah.
I can't take it, so?
Yeah.
I don't think it's retroactive.
Yeah, there is compensation, and you know, a lot of planning commissions and boards, theirs was, uh, stipulated, yeah. There's a DCA also has it in there. And variances, we come through the board zoning appeals, and we, in our rules and procedures, we have a lot of that coverage there. And we are, uh, rent, we have much. Application, we're already kind of doing that. We haven't done so much with, uh, we haven't done so much with residential or that, that we're implementing on the, could probably be zoning code. Standard forms, mind being in fact, victim dates, enforcement, recording, most of this stuff is in our rules and procedure. I would notice newspaper mail, penalties. They're here.
They're provided.
Yeah, now they got a separate entity, their deals are flying in the parking lots and that type of stuff. This is just a kind of continuation. Anyway, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Five minutes ahead of time. Comments, thoughts, as you look through this, is this a more powerful type of document to work with?
I did like the charts in Harrison County. I liked that chart where it's easier to look at, but other than that.
Okay. Now, your new one there, I'll get it on your computer, I'll, I'll send it to you. And there, so your new field marshal?
I'm the new field marshal. The new field marshal.
I will send you as, uh, kinda like what I did with the ded members, uh, a file together in that, that'll have about everything that we've kind of covered or done so far. And, and so, I'll put this as an attachment too, so, are you looking for that? Go ahead and write your, have an email address on there.
Another thing about Harrison County, their remedies and enforcement procedures are spelled out a little bit more than what I think they are in Salem, I mean, we're not, and we're not to the point of discussing that yet, but, uh, the Harrison County document does cover that and, and, uh, I guess lay out pretty well.
I can look it up.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, Harrison County is a huge document in there, and a lot of detail.
Yeah.
And that, uh, and they got some specific things, you know, that they're dealing with, which you're not able, you know, to what we want to do in there. I, uh, my personal feeling in there, I don't wanna make a, uh, a complicated document, for one, I don't wanna implement a complicated document.
Well, we will remake the wheel. I mean, we've got existing zoning regulations here in Salem, and so, I, I think, you know, it's gonna be good to have something that can, you know, we can transition from one to the other and not be like crossing the line into Mexico. Not everywhere, but, uh...
Yeah, the wheels have been so tweaked.
Mark, you have any comments?
Nope.
It was, it was too simple.
Well, pardon Mark?
Nope. Like when you're talking, they, they'll have a small, uh, camel's burr or something, if they, they're kind of advocating or said, you know, they want you to deal with it. Is that kind of like a, a school system, like in Salem, if they said, we can't handle it anymore, the county would have to pick it up? Is that, is that what happens here? I know in Kentucky, that's what happens, where when the city board of education went down, county had to take it over, so.
I didn't know that was that same kind of...
It, it's just, I have some question in my mind whether we would get stuck with the city, or when incorporated, you say it as an incorporated area, if that incorporated area could force us to do that. It's really not that they want, they, they may just wanna get out of that one particular subject and, and foster it over onto us as opposed to, you know, not, I mean, I'm not talking about the city wants to disband and no longer be an incorporated city or town. It's just that their board doesn't wanna have to hear all the hassles and complaints and all of that type of thing, so they, they say, okay, we're gonna shift that over to the county, you let the county take over that portion. And then we start hearing it on the, which nobody here on this board was, you know, they didn't just completely go down or dissolve.
Well, I think that Mark, as far as looking at what the law says, there's gonna give us credence, and that will be great, and pursue that.
Um, does this document go over like the width of a road, or blacktop, or electricity, or anything similar of that nature, some of the basics that you guys really don't have implemented yet? I mean, does it go over that?
Well, in the subdivision ordinance, there, there is those type of things, and that you're talking about.
Keep in mind though, this is, these are ordinances, these are laws over a very small
Area.
area, and the reason they're so draconian is because people are like right next to each other. If, if you start implementing or saying, you know, well, we get to choose the color of your paint. Yeah, I mean, but it, it's up there, you know, and signage and all of that kind of stuff. If you do that, that's gonna be you, you, hard to do. Palatable, or no one's gonna follow it, and you'd have to spend extreme amounts of money to keep everybody in line. Or do what Harrison County does and just sometimes use it, you know, no, they just don't follow the law. It's a club, you know, if they don't like you, they use it against you. And, you know, that's what he admitted to you in person. So, if you get something this draconian for, for as large an area as Washington County is, um...
Well, I think this is a lot more powerful and usable document than what Harrison County is.
I didn't like Harrison County either.
The, uh, thing about it is, there are certain things that are, that are not pertinent to our, uh, looking at, uh, our rural or open spaces. But if we are pushed into the segment of a, uh, a more...
A planned development unit of a central business area, then that's where you start looking.
You would start seeing that.
But you, but you're right, then in that scenario, you would be in a more compacted area. You're, you're absolutely right, you, you can't go the, in terms of just the vast majority of land, saying, here's the county ordinance. We want these types of structures, buildings, the residential structures, you can't do that. Travis couldn't enforce that, he would never cover it on, you know. Now, if somebody comes in, a developer comes in and says, okay, I've got a ten-acre slop, a ten-acre or twenty-acre piece of park here, and I'm gonna develop it. And I wanna develop it like Norton's Collins down in Louisville, okay? Then, that's something, that's something different than somebody building a home out on Mount Table Road.
Right.
Okay, so.
So, you know, there's good, and that's the reason we've got people that's around to have discussion of this, to try to implement and to utilize. Uh, you know, what documents we have available, to try to put something that is usable and, uh, does what we want it to do. Not as a club, but as a directional, uh, progressive group in the county, of course. It depends on which side of the aisle you are when you come in here, uh, you know, of not liking or liking. Some of it has to deal with people doing business or wanting to enhance their business. There are some people that, uh, want, have bought a home to live in and want to enjoy it. And sometimes those two match up and meet each other, and that's where you get them. So instead of contemplating or having these arguments out in the paper or out in the form of, we've got a structure as far as the mechanism to work. And so that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to make a mechanism to work those parties differences out. So, is there any more that'd be brought up before this planning commission at this time? We will try to get this into a Word document, so appealing this thing out.
It's in the document.
You got it?
In that email I sent you, I, I forgot to specify that I attached it, but it's.
In the Word document.
In that email I sent you, it's attached, even though my email doesn't talk about the Word document, it's in there.
All right. And I'll try to get that, uh, to you in that Word document that Anthony's. All right, if none, I'll either take a motion to adjourn. Emmanuel, President. Me and a board.
All right.
No, you're free.
Here. Board, everybody.
We gotta find, find the minutes.
Find the minutes.
Please see attachment, this, response, there's no attachment.
Whatever your name is at.
I'm doing all right, Mark, are you doing all right?